Hey there, James Gore, Sonoma County Supervisor. Today in our board meeting, June 10th, Monday, June 10th, we had an important report on fire preparedness, wildfire preparedness. So it's the so-called designated beginning of fire season. We're here in June. There are still active prescribed burning. This is mean controlled fires going on out in the community up until a point where our fire officials and veg management engineers and everybody decides that it's time to stop that. But we had a great panel today presented to the Board of Supervisors. So we're going to share this video and I'm just providing a quick intro. Wonderful to have our Division Chief for CAL FIRE, Ben Nichols, our Chief of Sonoma County Fire, Mark Heine, and also Jeff DeValle, our Department Head for Emergency Management at the table. They were joined also by Eddie Ingram, our Sheriff. And so it was a great presentation today. I'm not going to go into it because you're going to watch it, but just the things to remember are that, you know, every year we're going to be dealing with fires. The big thing to pay attention to is the difference between fires during normal weather conditions and fires when there is something called a red flag warning, which is the highest incident of active dangerous weather conditions, low humidity, high temperature, high winds, abundant vegetation. So, you know, be prepared, don't be fearful. What we went through in 2017, when we were caught on our heels, then when we went to 2019 and we got on our toes and we really responded extremely well to the Kincaid Fire and kept it out of our city core areas, but we evacuated almost 50% of our population. Then into 2020, when we had an active fire season with Wall Bridge Glass and Myers Grade Fires during the pandemic and the chaos of that, all of those were unique experiences that created dangerous situations and trauma in our community. The best way to deal with that trauma is to not just process it, but focus on preparedness. Make sure you and your family have a plan, you have a go bag. You do the active work of cleaning your gutters, of doing vegetation management, of making sure nothing burnable is sitting on your porches when there's these dangerous conditions. You make all the difference. So I want to thank you and hope that you watch this because this is good stuff.
So good morning Chair, good morning Members of the Board of Supervisors, County Executive, County Council. Jeff DeValle, Director for your Department of Emergency Management. And as mentioned before, I'm joined with my colleagues, Chief Nichols, Chief Heine, and Commissioner Smith. Here to talk about the 2024 wildfire preparedness update here, as we've all seen with the heat coming in this week and also from last week, summer is definitely here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Nichols.
Good morning. So a lot of folks are very interested year to year now about what fire season is going to look like. So the crystal ball has become front and foremost in all conversations. The rule of the game is that there is the potential every year for a major wildfire event. But I'm here to talk this morning about what we have trends coming into the 2024 fire season. So as you can see in front of you, the graphic on your right is the rainfall that we received across the state here this last winter. And that resulted in about 100 to 120% of average rainfall here in Sonoma County, which then took us out of the drought monitor map that you can see on the left there. For the first time in 2019, we recorded these lower levels of the drought here in the county. So trending is great here as far as the rainfall that we received. We still have water running and seasonal creeks and the fuels across the county are set up for a slower start to fire season. Next slide. So what we all came here for today for the CAL FIRE report out on what fire season 2024 looks like. Our predictive services folks up in Reading and what we call North Ops have put out the predictions for June through September of this year. And as you can see, green is good, red is bad, right? And so there's no red on this map. And if you recall in years past, we had a north half of the state that was covered in red, which meant above average potential for major fires across the north half of the state. So we're coming into fire season with a whole bunch of green there. This year it extends down through the Bay Area versus last year where we were, we were just average. So again, the moisture that we received this last winter set us up for success coming into fire season. But the couple takeaways that I wanted to back one side, the couple takeaways that I wanted to leave you with is that the highlights of the predictive services staff have talked about the fact that we will have timely pool moist intrusions that will be here for the next two to three months. And so we've seen that. Mr. DeValle and I talked about it last week, about the heat component and the cooling centers. And because of the cadence of the spike in hot, but then back to average temperatures, we're not seeing those prolonged periods of time underneath oppressive heat that we've seen in the past. So those segments, we'll see another one here tomorrow where the temperature comes up and then it comes right back down. So those occurrences will help slow our progress into what we consider peak or the critical part of fire season. So with that, however, with the amount of rainfall that we received, we do have an abundance of annual grasses. And so just yesterday, doing my defensible space, I was weed eating grass oats that were six foot tall. They were taller than me on the side of the hillside. So our grass crop is substantial. And so that's going to be something that we see throughout this summer. Obviously, you're tracking on the Corral Fire last week down in the Santa Clara unit, 14,000 acres and basically the course of an afternoon into an evening, a wind driven grass fire. And so the predictive services folks talk about those gustier dry wind flows are going to push those grass fires as we transition into the peak of fire season. We also, they're also talking about a trough set up off of the west coast here this summer that will allow for more frequent onshore gusty wind conditions that will again aid in those fog driven fires that we have over in Petaluma, down in Chief Heine's neck of the woods, where we have that grass crop and that onshore flow during the afternoons. And so we're anticipating a significant uptick in our grass fires and the control complexities that come with that, with the fuel loading that we have as a result of that grass crop. Next slide. So we've talked about it in the past, but just as a refresher, the state is broken up into predictive services areas. So if you look at the left side of the map there, the red colored section is what we call the mid coast to Mendocino predictive services area. That's our area. And so the graph on the right is showing the 1,000 hour fuels, the heaviest dead and down fuels that are available for wildfire ignitions. And we use that to, to help us with the trends towards drought conditions and critical burning weather. And so as we break down this, this graph, it may be a little bit different than you've seen in the past. They tried to make it firefighter resistant. There's no such thing as firefighter proof, but firefighters love colors, right? And so green is good, all the way down into brown. And the next graph that you'll see is red. And so it kind of gives us an indicator of where we're at during fire season. So in that, the lines that you see running across the graph are the values that we have recorded daily from 2000 through 2022. So 23 years worth of data. And the blue being where we're at currently in this calendar year, the gray that kind of blends into that graph is the average for that recorded period of time. And the red is the maximum, or in this case, the minimum recorded values at any point in time. So as you can see, and one other deal is the green, although you can't really make it out here, is a new function with this, the seven day forecast for what the weather folks think those conditions are going to do. I've noticed that that's been much more aggressive than what has trended to be. So taking that into account that that's the trend, but the blue is where we're currently at. So you can see that throughout the first part of this year, we were more moist out there. We had more water taken on into those fuels than we had in an average year. However, we ran into that period of time in early May where we had that sustained gusty winds that were blowing through the county and through the greater Bay Area. And that's the nose dive that you see in those recorded values down towards what were the minimum recorded values. However, those winds subsided and the regular coastal influence returned. And as you can see, we're right in between average and the max value. So we're right where we would expect to be at this time. Next slide. So this graph talks about the energy release component. This compiles all of the different information sets into one graph that basically says how hot is the fire going to be at the flaming front of that fire. And so firefighters use this graph, this information to determine firefighting tactics and upstaffing of resources, pre-positioning of resources, so on and so on. And so this case, instead of the minimum recorded values for those fuel moisters and the fine dead fuels, now we're talking about maximum values. So how, how high have those been on any given day? So as you can see there, again, we were behind the averages as we came into the year, that same reflection there for that offshore, not offshore, but the, the wind event that we had that pushed us above that average, but it didn't threaten the maximum recorded values. We did have that nice dip here in the first part of June, but now we're, now we're climbing back up. And so again, it may be difficult to see on your screen or your graph, but those, the, the green line is actually the one that's threatening the maximum recorded values. That the blue line stops at where we would be on an average year for that 23 year segment of time that we've got. And I wanted to take the time today to talk about it that while we have seen an uptick in fires as of late, the, the fire occurrence that we've had is not something to be concerned with. This is fire season, it's now mid-June, and we expect to be responding to vegetation fires. So for the unit here locally, last year this time, we were at 75 fires with 27 acres burned. This year, we have a little less of a fire occurrence, it's 68 fires. However, 126 acres burned in that same period of time. And obviously, the Crystal Fire last week put, you know, 57 acres of that 126 on the board. But while it was impressive during the initial phases of that fire and it was a ridiculously hot day, it just goes to show that hot doesn't necessarily mean a conflagration fire event. So that fire was a slope driven fire, ran up to the top of the ridge, slopped over a little bit on the back, but it didn't keep going like you would see, expect to see later on in fire season when the fuels are much more receptive to that fire carrying. The one other item that I wanted to call out here for those graphs is that, as you can see on the right side, it's a, it's a blow up of the center green box that, that shows the shoulders of fire season. So this, this graphic, this graph, the predictive services folks have said that the, the kind of the optimum or the most conducive times for effective prescribed fire implementation is in that light green area, the area between the 80th and the 60th percentile. And so we entered into that mid-May and we're, we're expected to, if we maintain those average values, to, to start losing that window in mid-July. And so to go with that, on the backside of fire season is where we would historically expect to see prescribed fire operations. However, when we're talking about fall prescribed burning, now we're talking about the opportunity for offshore wind events, resource drawdown across the state for other fires that may be occurring that are drawing those local resources away. And also the agricultural, the, the harvest season about trying to time that with those, those operations. So a lot of great work being done by the folks here in, in the Sonoma County. We just burned a little less than 800 acres up north of Lake Sonoma a couple of weeks ago. Got a couple hundred more acres, just shy of 300 acres, Lake Sonoma later on this week to help protect that water source for the county. And we're on track here in Sonoma County to burn in just our division alone, the same amount of acres that the entire unit burned last year. So a lot of great work being done by folks out there to get that proactive fuels work done before we get into the peak of fire season. So then we come back to firefighting. So when I did this slide, we weren't quite staffed up yet. I've noticed that with my review of the slides this morning. But as of today, we are at peak staffing. So that's 31 CAL FIRE engines across the unit, six bulldozers, five hand crews. And the Hood Mountain Fire Center has been up and running for a handful of months now, and they are ready for fire season as well, as well as Boggs Mountain Helotech Base and the Sonoma Air Attack Base. Currently, Sonoma has one tanker and, and one air attack on base. But by the 17th, next Monday, they will have the second assigned air tanker, as well as copter 35 Sierra, which is in the bottom right corner there, Sky Crane that you probably are very familiar with over the last handful of years. At that time, copter 8 Papa Juliet, a Chinook, will be coming to the Napa County Airport. And that's significant in that these exclusive use contract helicopters are part of a fleet of 13 type one helotankers, as well as four type two smaller helicopters, as well as two of large air tankers that are in addition to the standing CAL FIRE fleet of operations. But 8 Papa Juliet is one of three of the exclusive use ships that are going, that are night vision qualified. So that copter, another copter in Truckee and another copter down in Porterville and Tulare are the three copters here in the state that can be launched for those nighttime incidents. The top shot there is copter 602 After Dark. Our, our night flying program is continuing to grow. However, at present, Boggs is a base that if they have flown the fire during the day, they can extend into the nighttime hours because they've seen the fire, they've seen the dip site, but they will not be dispatched initial attack on nighttime fires because they're not, they don't have the staffing for that at this point. Next slide. So those are the two large air tankers on the left-hand side of the screen. One will be at Fresno and one will be at McClellan. Our Intel 641 platform is very similar to the FireRIS platform. It just adds more capacity for the state for situational awareness and intelligence gathering across the state. And then the bottom right corner is that finally, we are poised to deploy the first C-130, able to drop retardant by this fall. So no ETA on the exact timeline on that, but they are well underway on getting that tank and the aircraft and fully expect to see a CAL FIRE C-130 making drops this fall. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Heine.
Good morning. Well, here we are again for fire season. It has arrived. This weekend, across the county, we responded to five different vegetation fires. Interesting piece about that is almost all those fires were folks out trying to do the right things, trying to mow grass and doing those kinds of things. They're just at the wrong time of day. Needs to be done early in the morning, not in the middle of the heat day. So one of the hats I wear for the county is to serve as the operational area coordinator for firefighting resources. And my primary responsibility is to govern all the resources that go out of this county to fires across the state and any needs that I have to bring into the county from across the state. And of course, everybody's fully aware that we have benefited from that over the years. Unfortunately, during the 17, 19, and 2020 fire seasons, a lot of times when we have these elevated heat events, wind conditions, threats from the National Weather Service about incoming forecasts that could impact fires, we upstaff additional firefighting resources primarily through the Governor's Office of Emergency Services, who reimburses all the local agencies for their additional cost to add extra staffing onboard. That fund, as we sit here today, has gone dry through the end of the fiscal year. It got hit pretty hard during the winter flood events and the Russian River flooding events back in January and February, where we had requested through OES a lot of upstaffed resources, especially assets. I fully expect the state will fund that again come beginning of the fiscal year. And I'm pretty confident if I placed an order today for any upstaffing needs, that probably would be filled. I do a lot of work day in and day out, particularly during heightened times of fire activity, either in our county or around us, in contact with my counterparts in Mendocino, Napa, Solano, Lake County, and across the Bay Area. So we are on the phone constantly coordinating who has what resources that can flow back and forth while making sure that our county, of course, and theirs are fully protected during that. Also in Sonoma County, as you know, RedCom is the fire and EMS dispatch center for all of us in, in Sonoma County, with the exception of the CAL FIRE assets. And every day of the week, 24/7, 365, we have a command chief officer from some agency in Sonoma County that is on call to RedCom. So in the event we have any major escalating incidents of any time, that duty officer is dispatched into the dispatch center so that he or she can help coordinate the flow of resources inside our county and keep me advised of what we may need to bring into the county as far as support. We do a Monday weekly operations planning call across the whole county that Jeff DeValle and his DEM team lead. And we follow that up with a fire operational area call. So every Monday, we are getting full briefings from the National Weather Service. We're checking in with each other and every agency and stakeholder agency across the county to ensure we're all operating on the same level of intelligence and planning for that week. As Ben mentioned, I won't spend a lot of time. We have a lot of specialty resources at our fingertips. We're very fortunate to have an air attack base for CAL FIRE right at our airport here. And between the fixed wing helicopters and air tactical group supervisors, they provide a great aerial platform for us. The FireRIS plane, and, and don't ask me to spell out the acronym because I always forget it, but it's an aerial intelligence platform. That twin engine beach craft that you see flies over a Sonoma fire at about 10,000 to 15,000 feet elevation, can stream right to my iPad or laptop and to Ben's, live footage from the fire. They can fire map it, tell us where the fire is going to be in 20 minutes, a half hour, an hour. It's become an absolutely amazing platform. Sonoma County Fire District's helicopter, Sonoma County 1 enters its second full fire season this year. Last year, it flew 14 missions across the county. It's turned, turned out to be a great asset working in very close conjunction with the CAL FIRE aerial program because they really are the leads in that. So from my perspective, as your fire operational area coordinator, we are ready, we're well positioned. The communities in Sonoma County are very well protected. Even though we all wear different patches and get paychecks from different agencies, we are one team, one mission across the county. So that is my report, Jeff.
Thanks, Chiefs. So Department of Emergency Management, we've been very busy since the beginning of the year with the Community Preparedness Division and engaging our community and getting them excited about disaster preparedness. One of those programs that is coming up is our Model EOC program, where we've been working with high school students across Sonoma County, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Starting next week, they're going to come into the EOC. It's going to be a week long course. They're going to learn about emergency management, learn what the EOC does through the different sections, operations, plans, logistics, public information. And at the very end of it, they're going to be put through an EOC scenario and activate the EOC and actually run an incident. At the same time, they'll also be getting preparedness tips at the end of the Model EOC event. They will also get their very own go bag to go home with. Community preparedness again has been extremely busy on the Sonoma Ready efforts. As you may have remembered from last year, our Prepare Yourself skits that was funded through the Bay Area Wasi that we did in conjunction with KRCB has recently just been nominated for a Northern California Area Emmy Award. And Dr. Brown will be going this Saturday to see if we actually won that award. Outside of that, Community Preparedness has engaged since the beginning of the year, 37 different community events, whether it is disaster or fire earthquake related preparedness fairs, different community events, and about 4,000 people that they've engaged across those 37 events. The Emergency Coordination and Operations Team has been busy with our community evacuation exercises. We've done one already in the Cloverdale and Cloverdale Springs area. We have another one set for later next month in the Sea Ranch area. And that's an opportunity for us to partner with the community for those areas that have one or two ways out. Bring in the public safety partners, have them understand there are different ways in and out of their community and then get together on a Saturday or a Sunday, have the sheriff and the public safety partners come through with their high lows on. We test a SOCO alert, we send them a SOCO alert message. And then they usually come down to a preparedness fair and to one of our temporary evacuation points and test those systems. The Community Alert and Warning Division has been busy with the recent exercise up in the town of Windsor and the surrounding county unincorporated zones. One of the biggest takeaways on that was the data that we got back. Our OPT Inside, obviously, a lot of that data, people have not gone back in and re-updated their information, whether they've moved or changed phone numbers. So the system was able to tell us how many of those phone numbers were disconnected and we were able to go through and clean that information up. That does not include the information that we get from the utility providers every month. Additionally, social media, the Community Preparedness Division continues to push out social media since the beginning of the, of the year. 62 different social media posts across all of our different platforms. And about 1 million people have engaged across those 62 events, ranging from go bags to winter prep, to summer prep, and just where to go to turn and get information and community events. Shifting gears for the disaster service worker side or your EOC staff for the county family. The Emergency Coordination and Operations Team has been very busy with our county EOC and disaster service worker trainings, which include our core EOC trainings. Every EOC responder is put through about four different classes from EOC 101, which is basics of the state standardized emergency management system. Where the EOC is located, where their workstation is, the layout of the EOC, and then they also go into what their position specific training is and how they work into the bigger picture of the Emergency Operations Center. With all that training, we test it with tabletop exercises and lunch and learns, bring the EOC staff back in, put them through a scenario, have them talk through it and work through it. All this training leads up to a functional exercise, which we'll be doing this June, June 26. The EOC will activate simulating an earthquake in the North Bay region. This will be a Bay wide, Bay area wide exercise will be. The area, again, the EOC will activate for the day. Everyone will have different functions and missions that they need to. Again, it's just reinforcing all that training that they have been through. Next is our Human Services Department. Human Services not only has the mission of mask care and shelter, but they also help us with our temporary evacuation point. So anytime that public safety comes through and does an evacuation, we have a rally point of where they go to, usually in the parking lot of one of our mask care and shelter locations. And as you can see from the pictures there on the right, the temporary evacuation point is the first touch with those folks that have been evacuated, start to address some of their needs that they may have, starting the universal disaster intake process or the U-DIP process. And then once the shelter opens it up, following them towards the, the shelter. But Human Services has been very busy with their continued training around their temporary evacuation points and their mask care and shelter training. And additionally, you can see in that bottom left picture right there, that is actually at the Cloverdale Fire and Earthquake Expo. Those picture, that is a group of folks that evacuated from the Cloverdale Springs area through that simulated exercise. And they're going through the universal disaster intake process right there. Additionally, next month, we'll get together with our public safety partners here in the county, both law enforcement, fire, and emergency management. National Weather Service will be there. We'll, to our operational area partners meeting, National Weather will give us an outlook of the next couple of months and then start having some roundtable, tabletop discussions with our public safety partners around a wildfire scenario. Our duty officer program, much like the RedCom Duty Officer Program, Emergency Management has their own duty officer program. One of our emergency coordinators is on call 24/7. It is their job to keep their finger on the pulse of what's happening in Sonoma County and adjacent counties to either support or to take action on. Some of the tools at their disposal, they've got the fire camera system, which all of our public safety partners benefit from. Once a report comes in, they are able to go to the camera system. Dispatch is able to move that camera. The duty officer, as you heard Chief Heine talk about, conducts our weekly operational area situation call. Partners come on, Weather Service is there. Duty officer gives a report out for their week. And that really sets us up for when we do have an event such as a red flag event or no notice event such as a wildfire event, conducting those calls and us being able to get information out to the operational area and to the partners and vice versa for us getting information back. But more importantly, they also lead up our unified evacuation team. So if we do have a wildfire. So if we do have a wildfire event in the county, duty officer gets notification of that if there is a potential for evacuation. This team comes together really quick. It's made up of Human Services, Department of Emergency Management, the web team, central communications, Animal Services and the web team. And we're able to push information out in live time towards SOCO emergency and update our maps. And with that, I'll give it to Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Jeff. So just over the last couple of years, October first, two thousand and twenty two through the end of May, five thirty one, two thousand and twenty four, staff has spent two hundred and twenty five, nearly two hundred and twenty six hours in the program. We've issued one hundred and ninety seven Ag Access Verification Card badges to primarily plant agriculture producers. Sixty one percent of those that have been issued have been issued for plant agriculture producers. Fifty nine percent have been issued to employees and forty one percent have been issued to an owner. There are forty eight Ag Access Verification Cards pending, which means that they are primarily ready for issuance through the Sheriff's Office. We work in collaboration with the Sheriff's Office. Somebody applies online, provides their certificate of completion of a fire safety training course and their documents of eligibility. Those are then reviewed by staff in the Department of Ag Ways and Measures. And then if approved, they are transferred over to the Sheriff's Office. And the Sheriff's Office then has dates and times where they schedule for people to come in and get their photo taken and their card issued. Of the one hundred and ninety seven, fifty four of them have been canceled either due to additional information requested by Ag Ways and Measures not being provided. Sometimes they have duplicates and then other times they they just don't have the documents that they need to qualify for participation in the program. And then of the eight that have been denied, they were denied due to duplicate applications that they'd submitted. Most recently, we've been receiving a little bit of outreach from the equine community, the those that keep horses for sport and recreation purposes or run boarding facilities. And we've been working to direct those folks because they either don't have the, they either don't have the appropriate eligibility documentation, fire safety training, or they're not a commercial production ag producer. And so we work to direct them over to Animal Services to participate in the evacuation program that that the Animal Services Program runs through S Cart in the county. They also do welfare checks and other evacuation responses through Animal Services for larger animals like that. That's it.
Thanks. So with that, you can see that there's a huge community engagement program that has been going on to prepare our community and social media, the collaboration amongst the public safety partners and the Department of Emergency Management in our county. And really just want to encourage everyone to visit socoemergency.org, get those preparedness tips now and get ready. That concludes our report.